Steve, would you please lead us in the pledge?
The diligence to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Stacia, roll call, please.
So it's video and audio?
It's, yes, video and audio, but there'll be a delay. So that's why this is a test. It's going to take us maybe a week in order to figure out how we get it on and upload it, but this is going to be our first try at it, so. Roll call, please. Steve Jarvis.
Here.
Bill Minor.
Here, on the phone.
Jim Peterson.
Here.
John Johnson.
Here.
Okay, we have a council quorum. Do we have anyone else on the phone other than Bill Minor? Okay.
Ed Sundby.
I'm sorry.
Ed Sundby.
Ed Sundby. Hi, Mr. Sundby. Thank you for identifying yourself. Okay, before we move into the consent calendar, I would like to make one change. The Pennington County Sheriff's Office report, I would like to move that up for discussion just after we have the public comment to allow them time to be able to report out and then get back to the thing that is really important to us, and that's making sure that our city is protected. So we will be reviewing that right after the public comment. All right, with that being said, the consent calendar. Approval of 1112-2019 agenda, approval of 1028-2019 meeting minutes, and approval of claims. Any discussion, or I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to move the city administrators, attorney, and county Walters down to action items. And also, the $3,412.92 bill for the heating and air conditioning at the visitor center, request it to be taken out of Triple B money.
We will make those each individual items, 6A1, 6A2, and 6A3. Any other discussion, or I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the consent calendar.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second. Roll call vote, please, Stacia. Jim Peterson.
Yes.
Bill Minor.
Aye.
John Johnson.
Yes.
Steve Jarvis.
Sorry.
Okay. And at this time, I'd like to address public comment. Any members of the public may speak on any matter that's not on the agenda. We ask that you please limit your remarks to two minutes per speaker. Do we have anyone that would like to address the council? Hearing none, we'll move on. Before we move on to the Pennington County Sheriff's report, I'd like to remind everyone of the quorum and the protocol for our meetings. One person speaks at a time. We are using things virtually, and we are going to try to record this, so any side conversations can be very disruptive. So please keep those to a minute minimum. If it's necessary, you're welcome to use the hallway in order to have conversations. If you do come up to address the council, please state your name and speak clearly so you can be understood both on the phone as well as with our new media. So at this point, I'd like to invite Sergeant Harkins up to discuss the Pennington County Sheriff's report.
Thanks for getting us moved up. I appreciate that. There is one change, actually. When I was going through the log, the October log, there were four arrests instead of three. Those arrests were on October 7th, misdemeanor drug arrest. On October 17th, oh, I mean, on October 10th, we had a domestic violence arrest. On October 17th, there was a felony drug arrest. And on October 18th, we had a DUI arrest. So a total of four arrests for the month of October. And other than that, that's really all I have to report for October. I think we'll be helping out, or I know we will, we'll be helping out with the parade as we do every year that's coming up, so we'll be part of that as well.
Okay.
So are there any questions about the October report, or anything in general?
Sounds good.
All right.
As always, thank you for your service.
I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Are you working up here tonight? Do you got to go back to wrapping?
No, I got to go back to wrapping. Okay. Chris Plom is up here tonight. All right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
See you.
Okay. All right. Now let's move on to action items. 6A1, bill for the city attorney, that's what you moved, Johnny? City Attorney Connie Walters?
City Attorney Connie Walters.
And then, oh, the administrator as well? Okay. So, bill for services rendered by our city attorney. Any conversations? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make motion to pay the city attorney.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Alderman Minor, roll call vote, please, Stacia. John Johnson.
No.
Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
Bill Minor.
Yes.
Jim Peterson.
Yes.
Item 6A2, request to pay the city administrator's salary. Do I have any conversation? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pay the city administrator.
Motion to pay the administrator wages. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Alderman Minor, roll call, please. Jim Peterson.
Yes.
Bill Meyer.
Yes.
John Johnson.
No.
Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
Okay. Item 6A3, request to pay Planning and Zoning Commissioner Connie Walters. Any conversation, or I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pay Ms. Walters.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Minor. Roll call, please. Steve Jarvis.
Aye.
John Johnson.
No.
Jim Peterson.
Yes.
Bill Minor.
Yes.
Motion carried. Action item 6A4, the heating and air conditioning bill and payment out of the Triple B funds. Any conversation?
I think since it's a government building, we can use Triple B fund.
So you're suggesting that we should use Triple B?
Yeah, we've done it in the past.
Okay.
I think we have to vote on it. Right, Stacia, bring it up every time.
Yes. Yep, yep. So Alderman Johnson has put on the table, as it's a city building, he feels it appropriate to pay out of the Triple B funds. Any additional discussion on that? No additional conversation? No conversation, I'll entertain a motion.
Still moved.
Motion by Alderman Peterson, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Roll call vote, please. John Johnson.
Yes.
Steve Jarvis.
Yes.
Bill Minor.
Yes.
Jim Peterson.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carried, all in favor. Action item 6A, approval of ordinance 2019-3, amending Chapter 10 sign regulations within Title IX, first reading. And Danny Shade is here to discuss the first reading and the changes.
This is an ordinance revision of Hill City Municipal Code, Chapter 10 Sign Regulations. Planning and Zoning Commission has discussed and debated the current sign ordinance in 15 separate meetings from January 23rd of 2019 to October 21st of 2019. Three of those meetings were heavily advertised to engage with the public on proposed changes. Those advertised dates were June 17th, July 15th, and August 5th. Various other sign ordinances and sign information were studied, include Custer, Grand Prairie, Texas, Wisconsin Dells, Wisconsin, South Bend, Indiana, Spearfish, South Dakota, American Planning Association, the Sign Research Foundation, the proposed Hill City Sign Ordinance. That was a collaborative committee effort back in the late 1990s. South Dakota Codified Law, and Pennington County. The focus of the commission was to personalize the standard sign ordinance to the needs and wants of the merchants and citizens in Hill City, and to clean up some language that was confusing. The proposed changes agreed upon by the P&amp;Z Commission and reviewed and approved by the city attorney are, I want to look at the screen, under Section 1002, Definitions, there was added definitions for air puppets, digital signs, feather flags, electronic sign, and hanging sign. The definition, in our current code of animated sign, the proposed change is to shorten that definition, to assign or display that uses movement or the appearance of movement through the use of patterns of lights, changes in color or light intensity, computerized special effects, video displays, or through any other method except for the scrolling of a static message, or seen on tour off of a sign board in one direction per message. Billboard definition, we currently have it as see off-premise sign and outdoor advertising sign. We're shortening that to just see off-premise sign. We've changed the definition of electronic message sign or center to be what it's actually called, which is electronic reader board, which is a sign which contains a traveling message or a message that appears to be traveling, usually in a horizontal manner. The characteristics incorporated into any message remains constant and does not change in hue or intensity, or appear to change in hue or intensity as they appear to travel across or through the automatic changing copy area, also referred to as an electronic message sign or center. We put in a definition of off-premise sign. A permanent sign erected, maintained, or used in the outdoor environment for the purpose of the display of commercial or non-commercial messages not pertinent to the use of, products sold on, or the sale or lease of the property on which it is displayed. We eliminated the definition of outdoor advertising sign. Projecting sign, as per suggestion from our attorney when we first started looking into the sign ordinance back in 2018, suggested since projecting sign and hanging sign were so similar to just combine the definition, so projecting sign, we've added slash hanging sign. So a sign other than a wall sign that's attached to or projects slash hangs more than six inches from a building face or wall, or from a structure whose primary purpose is other than the support of a sign. We've eliminated animation and changeable messages, and inserted into that 104.6 a severability clause, which we did not have in our current sign ordinance. This is if one or more sections of the sign code are found to be invalid, the remaining sections stand on their own and are still valid. Figure 1003.1, we added a graphic of a hanging sign. Under Maintenance, Repair, and Removal, we have added, or when any sign's ad copy has deteriorated by 50% as determined by the code official, or is in a non-working condition. The attorney suggested that we also add 45 days in the case of deteriorated ad copy on the sign, which is basically, we had given, in the current code, it says 10 days if the sign is in immediate danger of falling, or if it's structurally unsound. But in the case of deteriorated ad copy, we wanted to give the owner time to get that ordered and replaced on that sign. Under exempt signs, they've added, the attorney added legal language notwithstanding the following exemptions. The commission added feather flags with no wording, pictures, or advertising copy of any kind as an exempt sign. Under prohibited signs, the commission added air puppets. Number 10, signs that exhibit statements, words, or pictures of obscene or pornographic subjects as determined by the code official. And 11, animated and digital signs. Under permits required, the changes are, an addition of one sentence at the end, erection of sign must be completed within one year from permit approval, or a new permit will be required. Under special promotion, event, and grand opening signs, this is one of the things that the commission really worked hard on, because we wanted to be able to give to our current year-round businesses, or businesses that are interested in trying to remain open as long as possible, the option to get a year temporary permit for a sign. So instead of the standard 60 days, such signs will be subject to the limitations set forth in the tables. The annual temporary sign permit is required. Permit year shall begin January 1st and end December 31st. There will be no prorating of the permit fee. And temporary signs may not be displayed during times when the business is closed for the season. So this will allow our businesses to have one temporary sign. They can interchange that message as much as they want, as long as they just have one temporary sign, and they can run it all year, instead of the current 60-day limit. Under Figure 108.1.2.1, on-premise freestanding sign, that we added the language and off-premise freestanding signs. We were always going by, off-premises, going by that table, we just added that language in. Figure 108.1.2.2 has been eliminated, and that is the size and height chart for the zone, in the commercial and industrial zones, for vehicle speeds 35 and above. Projecting signs, we just added that slash hanging signs to the definition. Feather flags, we've added feather flags. Feather flags with advertising copy are limited to three per property, with the sum of the square footage of all feather flags not to exceed the size allowed for temporary signage within that sign district. Currently, feather flags have not been either defined, or kind of, they're kind of nebulous as to where they fit. So the commission has determined that three average feather flags pretty much equaled what the size limit was for a temporary banner. Under off-premise freestanding signs, they've increased the linear street distance of where they can be placed. Currently, it's at 300 feet. The commission suggested a 500-feet linear street distance between off-premise signs. Temporary signs, they increased the limit from 32 square feet to 36 square feet, and that correlates with those three average size feather flags. They've expanded, suggested the expansion of the sign transition area to include Walnut Avenue from McGregor Street to East Main Street. The proposed sign ordinance amendment does not conflict with the intent or goals of Hill City's comprehensive plan. On page 22 of the comp plan, preserving the visual aesthetics that contribute positively to Hill City's look and feel, including the natural surroundings, unique buildings, and existing forms of low-impact development, particularly along the highway corridors. Page 24, aesthetics, keep Hill City unique, make Hill City visually inviting, so it doesn't look like a tourist town. And page 34, landscaping and sign ordinance could be reviewed to ensure they help improve the look of Hill City. Under comments, corrections, included in the revision of the ordinance amendment 209, 2019-03 handed to council at the beginning of the meeting, are the addition of definition amendments in Chapter 2 of Title IX. The definition amendments directly relate to any changes in the sign definitions of Chapter 10. Number 2, animated and electronic signs are already prohibited in the central business district and residential districts, and this amendment will prohibit them from the rest of the city. Number 3, the new year-round temporary sign permit was created in response to our businesses trying to stay open longer than the tourist season. 4, feather flags and air puppets are newer advertising products and included in the amendment. And number 5, electronic reader boards have been determined by public input and the commission to be an important service to the community, and these will be, continue to be allowed. Planning Commission recommendations, they've reviewed the sign ordinance amendment sentence by sentence at their meeting on November 4th of 2019. They asked for public comment, there were no comments. They recommend their approval to city council. Mayor, at this time, we should open this up to public comment.
Okay. So at this point, let's open it up to public comment. If you have something that you'd like to add to the conversation tonight, as this is our first reading, you're invited to come up to the table. Please clearly state your name, and let us know what your thoughts and comments are. Any takers?
Mayor?
Yeah.
Mayor, while somebody's coming up to the table, could someone email me the changes? I don't see anything that was sent to me.
In your packet?
Yeah.
Bill, did you get a packet?
Yeah. Yeah.
Are you talking about this?
Yeah. He's talking about ordinance 2019-03. So, yeah, the changes that Danny just referenced are in your packet. Stacia is emailing you the ordinance 2019-03.
Just that section at the very top.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
That's the only thing that was added.
The section at the very top, when you get it, Bill, is what was added. Okay. So while that-
Thank you.
You're welcome. So while that's occurring, anybody care to participate in conversation?
Yeah, it's Vic Alexander. Are the tables, are the tables part of this? I don't see any copies of the tables in here.
So the tables are part of the ordinance, right, Danny?
So they're not, they're referenced in here several times, but I don't see any in it. I don't know if Bill has them or not.
So Bill should have the old code, but if they're in the-
Yeah, I have the existing code with me.
Right. So Bill has a copy of the tables.
So are any of the tables changed?
Just what was referenced.
So what was changed was, let's review that.
What was broke on the old ordinance? Now, this thing's been beat to death for years and years in Hill City, the sign ordinance. It seemed like we finally came up with something that everybody didn't complain about.
Figure 1008.1.2, which is the height and size chart for on-premise freestanding signs, nothing was changed on the chart. It just was added the words "and" off-premise. And then the on-premise freestanding signs, commercial and industrial zones, vehicular speed subject to posted limits of 35 and above, that's the chart that was eliminated. And that's, those were the only time charts were referenced in here, other than the 1010.1 to 1010.6, which were not changed.
And then wasn't there a pictorial one that just had a hanging sign added?
That was added, correct.
A visual reference.
That's part of the 1010.1.
Okay. So those are the changes to the charts.
So do we want to, kind of, this is the first reading, right?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So do we want to take time and adjudicate these things right now, one at a time, or do we, I just noticed there's a comment, or I didn't comment at the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Kind of, some of them, like Johnny said, we kind of beat them to death after a while, but there's some points I'd like to make about different things all the way along the way. Do I wait and do that with each council member in between the meetings, or?
So I think at this point in time, since we're visiting this again, as the first time, it would be appropriate for you to add your comments on anything that you have, so the entire council hears it together and hears a consistent message.
Okay.
And then they can take that into consideration as they have their discussion.
Feather flags with no warning.
Can I interject something before you get going? Do you mind?
No, I guess not.
So, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
August 5th seems to be the last date that there was advertised public comment. This sign ordinance obviously has evolved, and has looked through it, and kept adding stuff to it. Has the final version of this been advertised to the public?
It's been on the, or been on our website.
Been on the website, but not, like, outreach to the public to say, this is what we're doing. This is what we'd like to do.
Other than being on the agenda, the posted agenda that it was being discussed.
We did three outreaches along the way, and I suspect that there were changes along the way. And I suspect there were changes after August 5th.
Okay.
So to me, it seems reasonable and logical, before we go into a first reading, to have this advertised well to the public. And, you know, nobody shows up, nobody shows up, but we have a final version being presented by P&amp;Z, which is their preview to do that. And it seems like a logical thing to me.
Yep. So I would think that the process that we use as a manner of reviewing these things, which would include a first reading, a second reading, and then adoption, could be construed as notice to the public as well. Nothing will get adopted until there has been multiple readings, those two that occur. So while I understand your desire to make sure that there isn't enough visibility, and there hasn't been enough public outreach, in this particular case, I do believe that there was that outreach that had been made. And while there are changes and tweaks that happen to that process, this is really a formal way of notifying the public that something is happening. So from that perspective, our first reading is not by any means intended to be the place where anything is passed. It's simply a reading, and the ability to have the public come up and address the council with their thoughts and concerns as well. I'd like to recognize Danny, who has something to add relative to that?
We had a big article written in this last week's paper, last week's paper, so this was also heavily advertised, the first reading on the sign ordinance revision. Plus, it went out into the chambers newsletter as well.
Are we in some hurry to do this?
I don't think the speed of anything has anything to do with this, Jim.
I've read that in the past, that we're not. So overdoing the public outreach and making sure, I get how the first reading and the second reading works, and after the second reading, if it's voted in, it's going to publication.
Right.
So, but I see that we outreach through advertising to people. Being in the paper, great. We've talked about that before, how people, no offense, great, but your readership doesn't go to a lot of people, you know? So, anyway.
So if that's the case, and Mr. Peterson, you feel that there is additional outreach that's needed, right now it sits in the ballpark of the council. You have the ability to table this, so there is no decision or nothing is moved on this further, to allow additional conversation. I believe the work that's been done on this has been done with due diligence. There's been attempts made for outreach, and at this point, it's now up to the council to decide if there are any deficiencies, if there's anything that's additionally necessary. So we will be looking to the council for further advice relative to how to proceed with this.
I also get that as well, Kathy, in that we are the legislative body that can take their recommendation-
Yep.
-and either deny it, approve it, or table it.
Yep.
So I'm asking the question if the final version has been, you know, sort of exhaustively put out there to people, to the people that it's affecting, which is who? The business people.
Yep.
So we should realize that we have business people that aren't here at this time. And I just, you know, there's no urgency. Alderman Johnson said, you know, what's broke? So anyway, that's my point.
Okay. And point well taken. Thank you very much. Do you have anything else to add, Mr. Alexander? Do you want to go through point by point? As this is a way that the businesses can communicate with the council in an organized forum with which to do that in, I would suggest if you have comments on specific things, go through them, so the council has time to understand where your comments and considerations are.
Well, if we're going to table this, why are we going through this tonight?
That was my point.
Why don't we do this whenever it comes back for first reading?
So I suggested that tabling was a way that we could deal with this. If you gentlemen feel that it should be tabled, and there's no reason to hear any public comment for those that have made time to come today to discuss this, then that's your option. I look to you for further direction on that.
I guess, does the P&amp;Z think that they have exhausted all avenues to get this information to the public? I mean, as Mr. Peterson brought up, it has been August since there was any kind of public reading, or, you know, getting the public together on this.
So, you know, the idea that these meetings are public is true, you know? So in their eyes, it has been alluded to earlier, that they've reached out to the public. But along the way, they've reached out three different times and advertised that, with the last one being August 5th. And this started out with three topics, it's ended up with double-digit topics, which is fine. And, you know, the people that it affects is the business community, and-
And I'm not trying to take anything away from the P&amp;Z, they have worked hard on this, and I commend the P&amp;Z for that.
Yeah, it's about the businesses that it affects, though.
Right.
And they can make recommendations all day long, and that's great. At the end of the day, as a council, we get to choose the legislative part of this.
I agree with you.
Exactly.
So my point still is just, my point is, we have a final version they're presenting to us, it will get hit here today, and it will get hit again a second reading, and we feel that- And we feel that that's enough to reach out to a business community. I'm not sure I see that, but...
Okay. So then, so then the conversation, I would ask to focus on how does the council feel the next steps in proceeding with this should be? As a matter of process, we have a first reading, a second reading, and then we have adoption. So if you feel that there's additional things that need to be done, I look to you for recommendations on how we move this forward.
Well, I think, I think Mr. Peterson's made a recommendation.
Which was, I gave him the option that it can be tabled.
It started out with the question, "Has this final version been put out to the business community?" And the answer is, sorta.
Okay.
Then what I can tell.
Okay.
Sort of, I, you know, people could have attended P&amp;Z meetings.
Yep.
I can probably guarantee you that they didn't. Not, you know, not all the people. And so, and maybe, nobody cares. Who knows?
I mean, and if we go with public meetings, I suggest a couple. You know, because there are certain nights that people just can't make it. Maybe they can come during the day.
When we did the work on adopting the International Building Code from Title IX, we made multitude of outreaches and where people could show up and be explained. This is the changes, you know, and that kind of thing. And I think it's important. And I know that some people are aware of this. I'm sure a lot aren't. And maybe it doesn't matter.
So at this point, do we need to make a motion to table it then?
Well, I'm just throwing out the idea of...
We need to summer, move on, one of the two here.
Right. So that's what I'm looking for from you. If the direction is that the council does not feel that there was enough public outreach, and I heard additional sessions from you, Steve, I didn't hear that from Mr. Peterson. All I heard was that he felt that there, he's indifferent on the amount of outreach that has occurred on this.
For the final product.
Right, for the final product. So what, I'd like to understand what direction the council would like to give to move this forward. And in addition, what do we do with?
I will take that and say that, you know, if we table it, I'd like to see an appropriate outreach to the business community so that they either are getting emails, however we decide to do that.
Okay.
And I don't see any sense of urgency. I don't, you know, to the point of what's broke, you know, they've gone through this to see, made their recommendations to this body. And I think the people that it affects, we need to make sure that they've had the opportunity to weigh in.
And if we like to table this, I would like to make the recommendation that there be at least a couple of outreaches, one at night, one during the day. Because, you know, people's schedules are different.
Yep.
Do you want to make that as a motion?
So before, before we go to motion, can we just have a little bit more conversation on this topic? We've got a product that's been presented by Planning and Zoning where they felt that due diligence was done in the outreach on this. So if, if the conclusion here is there's still some additional outreach that's needed, I'd really like us as a council to provide clarity and direction on what it is. They've told you that they've done meetings, the date of the last one was August. They just recently did a newspaper article announcing these changes. So what, in addition to what has been done? If it's setting up evening, you know, one more session or two more sessions, what direction can we give to them to roll with this?
Well, I think, that was pretty clear. I mean, to reach out to the business people, Steve would like to see that done in a couple sessions. And, you know, and as an information deal, say, "Hey, this is, you know, what it is now and this is what it changes and this is what, how would it affect you?"
And, you know, I'm not sure how Bill feels, but I agree with John and Jim that I don't know what the urgency is that it'd be done just right now. I would like to rather do this right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying, you know, there's things in here personally, I'm not sure. I would like to review a little bit more, but there's obviously, you know, like I said, there's double-digit things that this has evolved to. And I'm sure it's evolved past the August 4th outreach.
So...
So I think that's pretty good clarity, isn't it?
And, you know, I see that, you know, there's members of the P&amp;Z here and if some of them would like to speak, I would love to hear from them.
Yeah, I know, no, I think that just tabling it would preclude them from talking.
So I didn't say just tabling it?
Yeah.
Okay. What I'm asking for is clear direction for these people to go out. When you say outreach, outreach can be accomplished in a myriad of ways. And clearly, the last outreach that they took was to put it in the newspaper. So I think we need to be clear in directions that we give to them. "We expect you to do outreach," and that in means, we want you to have two meetings. We want you to do a newspaper article. We want you to, it needs to be, we need to provide clarity and direction for them.
Get to the people it affects, the business community. I don't think it's that hard to figure out who they are.
So it's not a matter of it being hard to figure out. It's just giving our people that do the work appropriate direction so they understand what the charge is to get the work done. That's all I'm asking for. So if you feel that the newspaper article and there's more needed than that in those outreaches, then tell them, "We want you to have meetings, a day meeting and a night meeting." And make sure that the appropriate participants are invited to that meeting. So you're specifically clear on what the task is that you're asking them to do.
And I guess that is it. But also, Janet, do you mind if I ask you a question, please?
Oh, certainly.
I'm sure you have all of the email addresses of most of the business people in town, even ones that are already gone.
That are members, yeah.
Yeah, that are members.
Uh-huh.
Could we possibly ask the chamber to help as far as getting the email out to all of them about, about this? And maybe even emailing the final version to them?
What I was going to offer, maybe...
Janet, could you come up so we can make sure you're captured on the...
Absolutely. What I was going to offer, I was going to offer as a helpful suggestion would be, my recommendation from a communication perspective, that's my background, that's my master's work. I would suggest either a postcard to all the businesses or physically going to the businesses that would be affected by this. And in the communication, I would say, if you, if you, you as a business owner uses any of these forms of signage or communication to promote your business, we would like to invite you to attend a meeting or provide the document for them. And that can be done electronically, can be done in person, physical copy. But we're very glad to help out and support the work of the...
And you have done numerous times on the same thing with the link right in the email.
Yeah, and we did. And I'd have to go back in and check, but we have a...
About four or five times.
We have a, we have a 54% open rate on our communication, our newsletter, which is a very high rate. And that's, so it hit over 100 people of our 200-some mailing list. So just so, but we're glad to help in whatever way we can.
Thank you, Janet.
Perfect, thank you. So we still have Victor up here. Before we go any further with council decision or directions on additional information that they're requiring, is there anything else we want to, we want to speak with Victor about? He's prepared to go through everything that he has. However, it sounds like an outreach would be something that would be supported more from council before having him have to do this multiple times.
Once again, I'm open to hearing everybody tonight, just knowing that.
I, as far as the whole thing goes, I, there's, there's a lot of good things in here that should be passed. There's some things that we've, in my opinion, we've kind of run to loggerheads with the particular mix of folks on Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'd like to, if we did have other open meetings or something about it, I'd like to see some council people there to be able to, you know, to have some discussion with or do it now. It's going to, it would take a while. But there's some, some parts in here that I think that aren't, you know, feather flags. For instance, non-advertising feather flags, I don't see how you can eliminate that. They're not an advertising thing. They're a feather flag. I don't know how you can, you know, expel two-by-sixes from the world of Hill City.
So are those...
It's not an advertising thing.
Those are treated as exempt, aren't they?
Those are exempt and allowed.
So that means it's allowed, Victor?
They're exempt. They're exempt from having to get a permit.
Right.
So you can have as many as you want?
As long as they're not advertising the words.
As long as they're not advertising.
No warning, pictures, or advertising.
Okay. The distances between, do we want to do that right now then?
It's fine with me. It's your time.
Okay. The feather flag says three per property. Do we come up with any resolution on what a property was? If, for instance, that entire block that I own most of right now, if that becomes one property, because I'm forced to get rid of the interior property lines as I do any building permits, I have to get rid of the property lines, adjacent buildings, that sort of thing. In order to do that, does that all become one property, that entire block? And then I'm limited to three feather flags for the entire block? I'm just asking. Do you know as much about it as anybody else?
Right, exactly.
Is that right?
Well, and also I think it's reasonable Danny's here and also it's more P&amp;Z. So please, any input from Danny and the P&amp;Z, please.
Right.
We didn't go into a discussion of how the code would fit a hypothetical five, 10, 15-year scenario down the road for one person. So no.
So the code is, go ahead.
So it's written right now, it's pretty clear, it's per property.
Per property.
Yeah, so if I can just jump in here. We've wrestled with the word property, address, whatnot over the years. And if you think of like a little strip mall or something where it's one building, one property, but let's say you've got three businesses in there, a hair salon, a pizza place, and a pet shop or something in there. The way that we've applied the code is, yeah, it might be one property and it might be owned by one person and it might be taxed as one big piece, but you've got three individual businesses that are operating there. And so the term "property" doesn't quite work in that scenario in that it's talking about the ground underneath. If you talk about addresses, even those businesses might not have separate addresses for whatever reason, but they are three different identities, okay? So how we've applied the code in the past is that each business would be allowed to get its temporary sign, to have its day in the sign, so to speak, to advertise their goods and their services. And so they wouldn't be restricted by that one word, that property, okay? Now if it's just one building with one business in it, that may be another story of saying you're now advertising one business on one property, okay? So in the past, that's how we've, we've divvied it out. As far as these changes, I don't see any of these changes affecting how we would apply it in the, going in the future.
Then why not say it?
Yeah, why not say it?
Because we've wrestled with that question. Jim, you know this, between 2010 and 2014, we wrestled with that whole question of address, property, that, that whole thing. There wasn't one definition of that, that everybody was in agreement that would cover the hypothetical out there.
Well, that hypothetical is, is one per business would solve that versus one per property, right?
I don't know, Jim.
In this case?
Yeah.
I mean, so Brett, what you're saying is, is you go in and interpret the code the way you feel it's supposed to be versus, and our job is, is to try to, you know, write the code. So when other people see it and read it, they'll know what it means.
No, we placed language in the code that referenced that whole conversation that we had prior to the adoption of the 2014 sign ordinance. And that was the intent of the discussion of how it was to be interpreted. But there was this question of property versus address. That question was out there. I mean, if, if you think that there is a definition, you know, one per business, if you think that would work, then we need, we need to go through that and see.
Well, that's specific to this particular, what he's referring to, right?
It may work in this example. It may not work for others. I don't know the answer to that question.
But we're not looking for a cookie cutter at this point. We're looking for 1008, 1008.3.8 feather flags. And I say, "We're looking," the comment is made per, it's per property. Is three enough per property? Would you just say one per business? Is that...
So the...
Or is it an and/or?
Well, so the code, it's more than just this one section. It has to do with freestanding signs. There's other applications of the word property or address within the whole sign ordinance.
But it wouldn't be for this.
So we need to make, we need to make sure that whatever change, whatever we're calling it works for everything.
Right, and that's what I'm worried about, because some of the changes came just recently and it was, you know, redone, a couple of people read it, went through the committee, through the commission, and then was adopted.
True, yeah.
It's not adopted yet, so...
By the commission, it has been.
It was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
But we're specifically talking about this one right here as it relates to this one. How does that relate to anything else?
There's, there's the use of the word property or location or business throughout the code.
Sure.
So we don't want to make that one use of the word property or business unique to everything else. You know, it's, it's there on its own little island versus the rest of the code. That's all I'm saying.
I understand.
If we're going to, if we're going to make a change to business, property, or whatever, it, it's a valid question and we've wrestled with it in the past. If there is a valid solution, why not apply it to the rest of the code?
For sure. And so I'm not sure why you relate this particular item right here that may or may not be able to be said in a different way, that it changes some other part of the code. It's not, I mean, a freestanding sign is not related. I mean, this feather flag is feathered flags.
Correct.
Right?
Yep, but the use, but if we're, if we want to be consistent in the code and we're using the word address versus property versus location, whatever, to me, it makes sense that we're consistent in that, in that use of that word throughout the code. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying we can't get there. I'm saying, is that the appropriate word? Or do we run into other challenges because we use the word business instead of property? That's all I'm saying.
So if we, if we've adjudicated that along the way, we should know that answer, that if we do run into other things, we need to change them. There's no hurry to get this done.
The end result of the 2014 sign ordinance revision, we did not have an answer to that question.
So...
There was not a solution to that question.
Okay, I...
If there's one now, that's great, let's apply it. It should be consistent with the...
So if you have a definition of property in your definitions and you have a definition of business in your definitions and you use that inner, you know, throughout your document, I don't understand the inconsistency.
Correct.
That's my viewpoint.
So at this point, what I'd like to do is I'd like to allow Victor to continue with his comments so we can be mindful of everyone's time here. It sounds like this would potentially be a good conversation to have in what I'm understanding outreach meetings are, which is what the council is calling for. So that being the case, it would be pertinent to ensure that we have the right people there at those meetings for outreach. So again, as Victor had suggested, it would be suggestible that the council can make it to whatever meetings they can to be involved in those conversations. So Victor, do you want to?
So is this a better, if we're going to do that, if we think that there's consensus to do that, is this a better time, a better place?
I'd rather not burn up everybody's time.
So that was the original question I had. And that was what we put on the table and you gentlemen wanted him to speak. So I'm letting you direct the flow on how you want to do this. Victor, if you feel it more mindful of time and your time in order to discuss this at one of those settings, then that's absolutely an option that you have available to you.
Well, that, I mean, that seems more logical to me, but I was kind of left out of the thing a little bit ago, so I don't know. I would, I would rather be able to, you know, converse about it with the decision makers, I think is the council, am I right?
Well, yep. So the forum to do that would be here. But I go back to, how do you gentlemen want this information presented to you? If you're okay with hearing it from Victor at one of these meetings that hopefully he can attend and you can be at as well, then, then you can give him recommendations on directing his actions.
If I can just make a comment, you know, we have Vic Alexander in front of us right now. I think it's a perfect time for him to show us what concerns or questions or whatever he has. And then if we have, you know, an outreach and we, and this is tabled to another time, we get a lot more people in the audience, that will free up time at a later date to hear their concerns, their questions, their concerns, so.
That's a, that's an option that we have.
What you end up losing is the ability to respond when somebody else in an open forum is making a comment. It's, did we ever think about this? And some of us have, as you referenced, you've done it for 10 through 14. We went through it, we worked on it for half a dozen years before 10. And we got what we've got. I kind of go back to Johnny's idea. There are some things that we need to, it started out as an animated sign thing. We were going to ban animated signs and all of a sudden, it got to be a rewrite of the entire sign ordinance. And that's, I don't know what was broken. There's some things that aren't broken, the distance between signs from 300 feet to 500 feet. It just, it just seemed like that was just a, you know, kind of a way to just crunch down on signs. Remember this, not just the businesses that want signs. It's the people that I know that read... Remember this, not just the businesses that want signs, it's the people that I know that read those signs. That's our visitors, that's the people that want to see where they're going. They wanna be reassured that it's two blocks ahead, or they, they want to know if you've got hunting, fishing licenses or not. Those kind of things, that's the public that we're catering to. If we believe that, that Hill City with no signs is it, you probably could make the news all right because it's not logical. But if we can, there, each one of these things needs to be approached. I, I think that we backed out of the idea of the going from the 300 foot to 500 foot. Well, let's just make it more restrictive, that's an automatic thing, right? Unless you're making a living with these things, unless you're doing, trying to do commerce, we're trying to generate sales taxes for the city. This is the, the economic generator for your entire tax base, for the entire city council. And we just hit a whim, say, let's just change this sign deal from 300 feet to 500 feet, and very little, if any, discussion, it sounds like a good idea for me, but are you on board? Yep, and they approved it. And there's very little discussion about it within that group. But I think that there is a bigger forum of discussionability here with the actual decision makers.
So, we appreciate your comments at this point. If you would prefer to wait for the other forum, then you can wait for the rest of it. At this point, I don't feel it's fair to make any suppositions on how people made decisions or what was done and how the information was passed. So, with that being said, what I'm looking to do is, I'm looking to move us along and make sure that we do the right thing. So, I'm simply looking for the council to say, Victor, continue, Victor, wait, Victor can make his own decision if he doesn't want to. It appears that he would prefer to have it in a larger forum with additional people.
I'll participate all the way, either way, so.
And you have been historically, so thank you, Victor. So, with that being said, let's come to a resolution on how we move forward with this. So, there's two things we need to look at, which I believe we, we actually have, which I believe we actually have gone to. And I'll get you in just a second if you could just let me finish this thought. So, the thought is, number one, it, I'm hearing from a couple council members, which will need consensus on from the rest of the council, that there needs to be an additional outreach. I simply asked for instructive information to give to the people who need to do the outreach so they make sure that they're doing the right thing. We need to make sure that we're very specific because at this point, it came to us with the feeling that it was vetted out. So, if there's something that's missing, let's just be specific. And the second thing to add is, we need to figure out what happens as this is listed as the first reading. So, does it get tabled? Does it get, what's the future of that? So, before we have any more discussions, I'd like to recognize someone from the audience who'd like to come up and make a comment.
My name is Connie Walters. I'm a citizen of, or a citizen of Hill City. The only comment I wanna make to the commissioners when they're making these decisions is this is not totally a merchant decision. When we were going through this, I had my Bible, the comprehensive plan on what the people want, and a lot of the merchants want the same thing that is in that comprehensive plan. So, I'd like each of you to review that comprehensive plan and understand that a lot of the people here want the city as it says in the plan, like Central Business District, period. A lot of people I've talked to wanted that extended, and not just citizens here. I'm talking about merchants here. So, I would like you to consider that when you're thinking about this. We're trying to build that picture, that the comprehensive plan, that how many years people worked on that plan, citizens, community members? I would just like you to consider that when you're making your decisions.
Thank you, Connie. Okay, one more. We'll, we'll take Danny since he's, since she's involved in the legwork that needs to be.
I just wanna clarify, the distance issue that was misstated by Mr. Peterson, or Mr. Alexander, excuse me. Pennington County is, has expanded theirs to 1,200 feet. So, when that information was brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they felt, hey, you know, they're trying to get rid of billboards and huge, you know, litter on a stick, as some people call it. They felt just increasing a couple hundred feet would be a reasonable compromise. There were some people that wanted to go right at that 1,200. That's what I love about this P&amp;Z commission. We've got very, we've got very different opinions from one side to the other. So, when they do come to an agreement and a unanimous vote, we have very much middle of the road, which I think is awesome. I think a commission should be that way. It shouldn't just be one mindset because you're not getting everybody's opinion involved. Second, we did have many business owners. We had Kralls, we had Farmer's Daughter, we had, the school district was here. We had Ben West Gallery, we had the owner of Inside Out. We had other business owners that were here during these public outreaches. So, I've, I've done internet, I've done, you know, having it on our website, I've done emails, I've done newspaper advertising. I wanna know, however, if we do do meetings during the day, my P&amp;Z commission obviously is gonna be involved. Are they gonna be paid for that?
So, I think those.
There would be extra meetings, I just wanna make sure.
So, those are, and that's, thank you for your comments, Dan. Victor, please refrain your comments. We're trying to keep this respectable to all that are involved. So, all right, so the two things that I had pointed out prior that were on the table.
Well, I think they've had some ideas. I've heard Janet say she could do this, postcards.
So, engaging, so.
Businessmen that aren't here and, you know, that gone for the winter, and all that's gonna be going on, they don't have the biggest idea until they come back.
That's why we advertise it heavily in the summertime.
And, you know, if we have, if we have a couple more forums, you know, don't schedule it at four o'clock in the afternoon, or five o'clock in the afternoon. I mean, people that work in Rapid can't get here. I mean, let's do it like at seven o'clock at night, something like that. Give people time to, to drive from Rapid that work in Rapid City or wherever, come home, maybe eat supper, then come to the meeting.
Okay, so I'm hearing meetings at varied times to be able to communicate that, and then you engaging the chamber for additional outreach. As we know, the chamber has been a valuable resource to us for many things.
Okay, I've already done that in the newsletter. Is there additional way that I should be engaging the chamber? Because I've already done it with the link to the exact code changes proposed.
With the final product?
Is there a different way?
With the final product?
Yes, sir. Is there a different way that I should be engaging the chamber? I, I don't know what else to do, so I'd love your.
And that's why I asked for specifics on additional outreach. So, perhaps you and Janet can get together and see if there's anything in addition to what's been done, or maybe just a friendly reminder, as you suggested, Janet has a lot of tools. So, engagement from that perspective, understanding that the chamber will only reach those business owners that are chamber members. So, I don't know what the ratio of chamber members to actual businesses we have in Hill City are.
Do we have a list of water bills we send out?
I, I would think that we have emails or something from all the business, businesses here in town. I mean, can we not do it ourselves as a?
So, at this point, you're bringing up what could potentially be a topic for the future, and that's a registry? No, we do not. We do not have a registry of businesses that are in, in our city limits. So, there could be situations where you're right. We're billing the owners of that building, but we have no idea who the subleasees are who's renting that building. So, again, I think that could potentially be a topic for another discussion. And in a case like this, would be good justification to have some type of accounting of the businesses we have, not to mention the needs that we have from a safety perspective for the city. But what, with what we have to work with today, and that's a place for us to go, I think outreach relative to two meetings, is that, would that be, would council feel that that is enough additional outreach to opportunities to provide?
I would have no problem with that.
I wouldn't have a problem, as long as one, like I said, was at night, one during the day.
Okay, Mr. Minor, would you like to add on that?
Yeah, I, I think at least, and then some kind of direct mailing, whether it be email or post office, whatever, snail mail.
Yep, and we can do the best.
I also have a concern about the temporary permit fee. My personal feeling is $120 is a lot for a temporary sign permit fee. So, I'd really like that well advertised and explained to people what that's gonna cost.
Yep, because you're correct, for a business that's open for three months, 120 is steep. But for a business that's open for 12 months, that's $20 a month. So, there is a big difference there. So, as part of the understanding and advertisement, that should be a part of it. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Minor. So, I'm hearing that some type of mailing outreach, and we'll do the best we can. I myself put together a list of businesses, and I know that I'm not all inclusive for whatever, so whatever's available to us, we'll use with what we have. So, from that perspective, Danny, are you comfortable with the instructions that you've received relative to additional outreach?
Yes, and do you want the P&amp;Z commission involved in each of these two additional meetings?
I think additional conversation needs to happen at the next P&amp;Z meeting, making them aware of the, of the sentiment and what happened tonight at tonight's council meeting. Maybe a moot point, since I see most, if not all, of the planning and zoning members here, but have some conversation relative to their level of involvement and engagement. Not a formal meeting to be set up, but how do they wanna participate in this? Okay, so I believe we've exhausted the conversation on that, and we have clear marching orders to move forward. So, now, let's talk about the item that has put on, has been put on as first reading.
Thank you, we should table it.
Okay, so we have a, we have.
Make a motion, we table it?
We have a motion on the floor to table from Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Jarvis. Roll call vote, please, Stacia. Jim Peterson?
Yes.
Bill Minor?
Yes.
John Johnson?
Yes.
Steve Jarvis?
Yes.
So, just to provide clarification on that, there is a motion to table. Do we have a time, expected timeframe for that table? Are we tabling it to the next meeting, or?
Can I make, so we just voted on it, okay?
Yeah, so it is tabled. I'm just asking for a timeframe.
Well, the timeframe would be after the, from my perspective, would be the outreach and then.
Yeah, after the outreach.
I mean, that's the logical, I think, reason for that, so if it has to take.
The P&amp;Z can set those, those dates.
Yep, so if I can, if I can potentially make a suggestion and see if it's something that would be agreeable to the council, the next time this comes up, maybe see it as a report item. So, that would be post all the meetings and everything happening, so there could be some conversation to relay the information and then schedule it for the following council meeting as a, as a reading or whatever needs to occur.
Let me see if I heard you right, so have the, the P&amp;Z meeting figured out?
Have the outreach done, have all of that completed, correct?
Bring it back, there's a report item.
Right, and then schedule it as.
Got a liaison, right?
An agenda item.
Liaison for P&amp;Z?
You do, yep.
Should they report?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, it's fine, there is no sense of urgency at the moment, right? I mean, with anybody, I think, like I said, I've read that in the past from the P&amp;Z. Their idea was.
We, we both did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I believe we have a resolution on that. Any additional conversation on it? All right, let's move on now to action item six beyond the agenda. So, although it looks pretty large and daunting, actually, these are just on sale, off sale license renewals. So, as we have, as we have historically done this in the past, we need to read each one individually, but typically, we'll have one councilman that makes the motion, another councilman that seconds it, and then we have approval by council.
For the benefit of.
Right, right.
The taker, the scribe.
Right, for the benefit of the scribe. So, if we can do it in that manner, it would work well. We do need to agree, address each business individually, but I believe in this situation, since it is not a direct financial vote, we can actually do it as consensus. So, as we go through, I will read each one, ask for a, a motion and a second, and then ask for all in favor and all not, instead of going around asking for individual votes. So, if that's acceptable, let's get started on the 2020 on, off sale wine license renewals.
All their taxes and everything.
The taxes have all been paid. The only thing I am waiting is for the backgrounds to come back, and that includes all of them, the backgrounds. None of them have came back from Pennington County yet. So, the motion should be one in such that if you choose approval, it is approved pending receipt of the background check. Okay, so.
Everything else is okay.
Everything else is okay. Okay, so starting out with A, Alpine Inn, 133 Main Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So, I have Jim that makes the motion, Alderman Peterson, and I have Alderman Jarvis that seconds the motion. All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
I think that was an aye, motion carried. That wasn't an opposed, right, Bill? It was an aye on the first side, okay. All right, B, Desperados, 301 Main Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved, motion.
Okay, Alderman Peterson, second, Alderman Jarvis, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None, motion carries. Harney Peak Inn, 125 Main Street, motion to approve? Our Alderman Peterson, second. Alderman Jarvis, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Item D, Twisted Pine, 124 Main Street, a motion to approve?
Oh, so moved, motion.
Okay, so.
So moved, huh?
Okay, yeah.
Are you okay with that, Steve?
Sure.
That's fine, so.
It's only, I'm not that I care, it's just, it's a benefit.
It doesn't matter. Okay, so Alderman Peterson, Alderman Jarvis, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Uh, Jim, Bill's in favor? Opposed?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed, none, motion carried. Shoot Rooster, 850 Shoot Rooster Drive. Alderman Peterson, Alderman Jarvis, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Black Hills Central Railroad, 222 Railroad Avenue.
So moved.
Motion Peterson, second, Jarvis, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None, motion carried. Dollar General Store, 681 Main Street. Motion Peterson, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, all those opposed? Motion carried. And Discount Bargain Bar, 264 Main Street, motion? Second, Alderman Jarvis, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carried. Okay, so we did pretty good on the first section. Now, our second section is the 2020 Retail On Sale Liquor License and Operating Agreement Renewal. So, again, same situation.
Yep, the background checks, I'm still waiting on, the taxes have all been paid. The payments for this is not due until December 27th, along with their copy of their liability insurance, where we are the additional. So, those will be here as of that time. This is just to get the renewal license back to us, and then we will hand it out as soon as they have signed the operating agreement and made their payment along with the liability.
Okay, so the motion will include all that, I'm expecting. So, let's look at the first one. Shoot Rooster, 850 Shoot Rooster Drive, do I have a motion? So, Alderman Peterson, Alderman Jarvis, that motion would include the background check coming in and then the payment being due at the end of the year, or the 27th.
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all in favor, Bill was, none opposed? It's passed. Yep, it, it, it doesn't matter, it passes, but yes. Okay, Hill City Cafe, 209 Main Street. Motion, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carried. And Mangy Moose, 240 Main Street, do I have a motion? And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. All right, let's move on to the second from the last, the 2020 Retail Off Sale Liquor License and Operating Agreement Renewal. I believe we have the same situation here, pending background check.
Yes.
So, with that being said, Kralls Market, 531 East Main Street. So, Johnny, and do I have a second?
Second.
Steve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carried. And the last one, 2020 Restaurant On Sale Liquor License and Operating Agreement Renewal. Same situation, pending background check. So, the motion would include the pending of the background check. Do I have a motion?
Always motion.
Steve Jarvis, do I have a second?
Second.
John Johnson? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None, motion carried. Okay, that was an exercise. All right, now, the last action item, 6F, Rapid Rooter, Shoot Rooster Drive Sewer Cleanout. So, I'm looking to see who can give us some potential background on this. Stacia, I think I'm gonna turn it over to you. Can you just explain what the bill is for and what's happened so far relative to the bill itself?
The bill is for the service line from the Shoot Rooster and I believe it's 890 Top of Hill. Hill for the Millers. It's their private service line for the sewer, and Dan Platson had called Rapid Rooter out to clean out a blockage that was there that we, he saw some bubbling up occur at the time.
Okay, and what has happened relative to payment of this is, I know we've discussed this invoice previously.
It was sent to the Alexanders for payment, and it has not been paid. It's sent, was sent back to us. They have written a check for half of it, but not all of it.
Okay, so...
They're paying for $450 of it or something?
Yeah, which is half.
Did I hear you right? Did you say Millers previously?
I believe it's the Millers that are up on...
Above them?
Yeah, that are the two trailers that are on top of the house.
So the work was done for them or for the Shoot?
So it's the service line.
It's their service line.
It's the same line, right?
It's the same line.
Right, so if you look at it that way, that line does service all three of those. What I had heard relative to what was found was things like grease and things like that, but at the end of the day, when you take a look at, at the way this all kind of went down, the service line is for all three of the residents. The fact that it was a private service line does indicate that this should have never been called out by a Hill City city employee, and there has been disciplinary action taken to address that. So from that perspective, the city shouldn't have been involved other than a phone call to the Alexanders to say, "You need to get your line cleaned out." So we were addressing that part of it. The question on the table today is, the Alexanders have indicated that they would pay half of this bill but don't feel full responsibility for it. So we're looking to the council for some guidance on this. Typically, it would not be something that the council would get engaged with, however, in this particular situation, the actions that were performed by the service company were actually called upon by a representative of the city. So again, I want to make it perfectly clear that those actions are being dealt with separately.
Do we know the genesis of why a city employee did that?
So there was bubbling up that was occurring down the line some.
Well, I get that there was an issue with the line.
Right.
Why did the city call it in?
That was a decision that was made by the, by the Public Works Director.
And...
But basically, what we're here for is, we owe this bill and we need to pay it.
You know, I...
Right? So I mean, I mean, we need, we need to pay the bill. I mean, that's right, we called it out, the city called it out, we need to make sure this bill's paid.
Yep.
And then how we collect from the other ones, we need to do that separately, I think.
Has anybody approached the Millers?
I don't think that, I don't think they even know anything about it, as far as I know.
I don't think they knew about it.
Okay.
Well, they might have. Not that I've heard they've never said anything to anyone.
Well, I wouldn't say anything either.
So I guess, I guess, are we here to pay the bill? Are we here to, are we here to pay the bill?
Yes.
Okay, I make the motion we pay the bill, because we call it out, we owe it.
Okay. There's a second on the table, and since it's financial, can we please have a roll call vote?
Is there any further discussion, Mayor?
Absolutely. Chime in, Bill.
Is the $58 of tax been removed, Stacia?
No, I have not called them regarding that. I wanted clarification regarding if we were paying the bill or not before I proceed in that process.
Okay, so if we agree to pay, you'll, you'll see that the, the tax charge is removed?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we're still getting hung out for $450, which is better than nothing?
And then, on instruction, we can send notifications to the Millers. Okay, so I've got a motion on the table to pay the bill, a second on the table, roll call vote, please, Stacia.
Jim Peterson?
Yeah.
Bill Miner?
Yes.
John Johnson?
Yes.
Steve Jarvis?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. All right, moving on to...
Then on that, is the broken line repaired? Anybody know? Did they dig it up and fix it?
No.
So it's still broken?
At this point, if that service line is broken, then it still is...
Still broken and bubbling up in the street?
I do not believe there's any additional bubbling up that's occurring, so...
So...
Okay, all right. Okay, so moving into report items, we've already heard from the Pennington County Sheriff's Office, so I would like to invite the chamber up.
Good evening once again, everyone. Thank you very much for the privilege of reporting to you. We, I'm going to start off by saying thank you for your assistance and support in fixing our furnace. We knew that was coming. We've been holding our breath for several years on that, so we're grateful to you for that. Thank you so very, very much.
Are you warm, ma'am?
Oh, yes, indeed. It's wonderful, thank you so much. Boo Bash that we held for the community was awesome. Thank you, Mayor Kathy, for coming, and it was a success, deemed a success. We probably had at least 100, I'm going to say 150, maybe 175 parents and children. It was great, we'll add to it next year. Nice support from our board who made it happen. Girlfriend's Weekend, awesome planning committee. Ladies worked very hard and gentlemen to make that happen. Numbers, I think, were not quite as much as they would have liked to have seen, but it was, it was an awesome event, and we have lots of ladies who are planning to come back next year. We know our market and we know that the ladies who came enjoyed themselves, and they actually, there was a group from Lead and Deadwood that came, and they stayed for the whole weekend. Well, the thing that I heard when I was out visiting with them on Saturday afternoon was that they liked the addition of the comedian, the humorist, and the brunch on Sunday. So we know that events bring people to town, so this is a great signature event for Hill City. We also got great media coverage on that. We had a community broadcast from NewsCenter1, and also Lorena had gone up with Stephanie to KOTA. NewsCenter1 will be coming for Old Time Christmas as a result of that. So I'm very pleased to report that that was an effort that we had made and paid off. Old Time Christmas on the horizon, November 29th parade, so thank you for your approval of the parade permit, and Mayor Kathy. If there's anything else we need us to do, we're, we're ready. Mixer is the 14th, is coming Thursday. You're all invited, please come to First Interstate Bank from 5:30 to 7:00. We would love to welcome you. Right now, we had an awesome board meeting today. Our board is very engaged, we're a very convivial group. Some of our longtime board members have said this is the best board that we've ever had, so I'm pleased to be a part of that. You've gotten all my, my numbers. This was a very intense management, planning, and preparing for the next year, month. That is our focus right now with our content, our calendar of events, and becoming very aggressive about how we get our message out and our branding going forward into the next year. Bless you. So we are right now also planning our 2020 workshops for our members. Holiday event support, marketing planning with South Dakota Tourism in our agency, and also reaching out to local agencies for continued ongoing messaging. Glad to have you there with us, Jim, today. Looking forward to production of our Southern Hills Vacation Guide. The one thing, you know, everything kind of tends to wear out over time, and our, after looking for a resolution with our DVD player, it's not the DVD, it's the player. So we're going to have to spend a little bit of money to get a new one, but that's, that's important. So this, now, in this period going forward, this is our time to plan, prepare, get our messaging out, get our scheduling out there, and get the VIC ready for the next year. So that's kind of in a nutshell.
Don't mean to interrupt you, but the First Interstate Bank Mixer, did you say it was on the 13th or...
No, it was on the 14th, on Thursday the 14th. You're right, on the 14th.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. So, and actually, our numbers, and, oh, and I did send our numbers for our hours of operation to Brent Station tonight. That will be on the next agenda for your approval and review, review and approval. Our numbers for walk-in traffic actually held about this, we were about down 100 from last year, but our phone calls were about the same, interestingly enough, and were our web requests, so that's as typical as time of year. So that's pretty much all I have. Are there any questions that you might have for me, or anything I can augment?
Mayor, I have a question for Janet.
Yep. Mr. Alderman Miner?
Go ahead, Bill.
When the council passed the 2020 budget, we included monies for first quarter advertising. Have you established a plan for that yet?
We actually discussed that today, and we are looking at our events and bundling them together and planning to reach out to the merchants and our businesses to see how they would like to participate. So yes, there is a plan in place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you again for the wonderful work you do for our community.
Grateful to be here, thanks to all of you.
Absolutely. Okay, Public Works Report. So I believe we have a report in the packet. We do. At this point, we've clearly been faced with snowstorms, and the Public Works staff is down a member, so the staff has pretty much been working around the clock to do that. So for this particular meeting, we've been provided with the details and specifics. So Public Works was given the option to come in person or not, and I think having some sleep after being here around the clock Sunday night was something that was a lot more appealing than having to sit with all of us. So we don't have any... Oh, I'm sorry, what, Bill? Okay, so we won't have anybody in person. However, we do, I do see that we have Jim here, so I'm going to invite Jim to let us know if there's any updates relative to the infiltration and what's been happening with that, because I know that the council understands the critical issue that it is. So would you mind coming up front, Jim?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm not on your list.
You are, you're still part of, part of us.
I just wanted to say that we talked about the infiltration. It has dropped considerably, well, not considerably, but it has dropped since our last meeting. It's about half. I also spoke to Abby with Rural Water, we talked about smoke testing. She doesn't seem to think that that would help us much, because it's not, it wouldn't address... Smoke testing would be more for if we have any open cleanouts, or if we have an abandoned building site or something that has lines coming up through the ground. As far as breaking lines like the Shoot Rooster line, we would never see that with smoke testing. It wouldn't bubble up through the ground like water does, or like sewage does. So she feels that camera would be the best idea to go, and to start out with our oldest lines, because it looks like we have lines that have been, are collapsed or broken or, or whatever, so start out with...
Are these our lines or...
These are our lines. They'll be the main lines. And we'll be able to, she said, even though we can't go up the service lines, she could, her camera is able to, to look far enough up them that we should be able to tell if a service line is giving us trouble, like they did in Keystone. They found two service lines that were both bringing in 30 gallons a minute, or about 80,000 gallons a day down in Keystone, and were able to fix those, and that made a considerable difference there. But she says that's probably the best way, you know, to start out looking at our oldest lines first, or any lines that we've done construction on lately that might have changed.
Well, discussing like the Shoot Rooster still, if it's broken, there's probably infiltration there?
Yeah, absolutely.
So shouldn't somebody have to fix it?
Mm-hmm.
Besides, talking about it?
Right.
Yeah, that's...
Well, we'll discuss that later, I'm not so sure.
I get the oldest lines, and that, you know, certainly makes sense. Would it be, and maybe you've done this, and I think, Bill, you know, can you go around and pull the man covers and see?
That's what we'll do.
You know, sort of, you know, evening or whatever, to say, "Okay, this section is really bringing in a lot and shouldn't be much, you, you know, you guys know what you, to attack it along with the oldest lines."
Right, we'll determine which lines are the oldest, and we can go pop manholes and then say, you know, if we're not bringing any water through there, then there's not much point in camera in it.
Right.
But I mean, if we pop some old, some manholes and we're getting a lot of water through there, and we know it's an old line, then that's probably a good time.
Exactly, yeah.
And then also, she said, like, right now, since we're still bringing in so much water to wait until spring, until things, the ground freezes, and then we don't have, and the groundwater dops, and so we'll be able to go through and the camera will be able to get a better picture of the entire, entire pipe. So she's talking like April sometime in there, and that'll give us plenty of time to pop manholes and determine what we want to try first.
Yeah, make your priority best time.
Right. And if we find one or two big leaks right off the bat, then...
Go for it.
We'll wait, we'll wait, you know, down the line for other... Although the Rural Water does recommend that they camera, the city or municipality should camera all their lines every, at least once every three years, and we haven't done any of it. Yeah, we've done sections of it, but not, not our entire system. Other than that, Blackburn Basements contacted them. The same day that you sent the email, I didn't look at my email before I called them, and I talked to the gal, and she said, well, she said, "Our expand, foam expansion division is disabled. The foreman got hurt and a lot of the equipment got destroyed." She said, "So we're having to repair our equipment, so they are unable to perform anything this year." She said, "It won't be till spring, till everything's fixed." As far as the foreman, she wasn't talking about it, so she didn't answer any questions about that, but... So that won't be till spring also.
And that, that's who?
Blackburn Basements.
Are they the only ones to be able to perform that service?
That's the only one that would give us even a bid.
And you, so obviously you reached out to other people?
Yes, we have. Yeah, and we've already sent them a 10% deposit. Other than that, that's about all I got.
Any other questions for Jim? Thank you for coming up tonight and providing us the...
Well, thank you for listening.
Take care, Jim.
Good evening.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so let's move on to other report outs, so myself. Yesterday was Veterans Day, and at the Veterans Luncheon at the Senior Center, I read a proclamation for yesterday, so I'd just like to read it here in public so everyone knows, and a copy of this was given to the Senior Center for display. Veterans Day Recognition Proclamation. Whereas on November 11th, 2019, we honor American patriots who have served our great country and who defend our way of life. We salute those who have taken up arms to protect our independence and secure our freedom. Whereas we will never forget the heroes who made the ultimate sacrifice, and all those who have not yet returned home. Whereas all citizens are asked to celebrate the contributions and sacrifices of these men and women and serve our veterans as well as they have served us. Now, therefore I, Kathy Skorzuski, Mayor of Hill City, proclaim the observance of Veterans Day to appropriately commemorate the veterans of our armed services across our great nation who have fought to protect our freedom and our great nation. Signed this 11th day of November, 2019. Okay, other things that I'd like to make sure that I cover. So we received our, dated October 29th, we received it on Halloween, our Department of Environment and Natural Resources update on our drinking water. And the letter reads as follows. The drinking water program has received the results of a sample submitted for a quarterly arsenic from well number four. The running annual average, RAA, of the last four quarterly arsenic samples is nine micrograms per liter, and the last four quarterly samples are less than the standard of 10 UG per liter. Hill City does not exceed the arsenic drinking water standard. Arsenic sampling from well number four is reduced from quarterly to annual sampling. The next sample is due during 2020. The results of chemical compliance samples must be kept on file for 10 years. If you have any questions, contact them. So the issues or the non-compliance that we were facing for two successions in a row has now been lifted as we have, it has now been brought back within compliance. So our requirement to report has moved from quarterly to annually. So now we will be doing this once a year. That doesn't eliminate the regular sampling that we do of our water, but this is specific to the arsenic and the issues that we had faced last year as a community.
So, can I?
Absolutely.
So what's the cost to do an arsenic test, rough numbers? Do you know, Jim?
It's like $20, $25, I think.
So would it be prudent on our part, because we don't know what fixed it, right?
Mm-hmm.
It just went away.
Correct.
Would it be prudent on our part to continue sampling, maybe at least biannually or quarterly, just to...
So for the past, for the past six months, we've been testing monthly as well as the official quarterly test for the state. We're going to continue our monthly test.
On for arsenic?
Going forward.
Yes.
So that doesn't, that won't change.
You can catch it, but if there's something going on.
So those monthly tests are for our benefit. The state also receives a copy of those lab results, but they're not the official tests, just so we know where we're at and so we can start to chart it and see, okay, during this month, do we see it higher in the winter? Do we see it lower in the winter? Is it higher in the spring? You know, so we're getting some data that we can kind of graph and look at.
To do a medical research.
And maybe understand it a little bit better.
Have we had other wells test high for arsenic?
Everything else has come back either seven or eight. So there's arsenic, in the hills, there's arsenic everywhere. Keystone has the same issue. The Southern Hills Water District, they have arsenic in their water, but it's, it doesn't exceed that standard that's set.
So when you say...
So you don't need to do anything special to, you know, eliminate unless it goes over that 10 ranking.
So when you say you're going to test, continue to test monthly, that's just on well number four, right?
Right, yeah. Consistently, the other wells have come in at seven or eight. They haven't fluctuated.
And how often do we test those wells?
Annually. Those are on the annual test, yeah.
And that's a number that they've lowered not too long ago, right, to that 10?
Right.
Yeah, that was about 10, 12 years ago. The standard used to be 50, and then they lowered it, I think it was 2006, they lowered it down to 10, the requirement of 10.
Okay, I also wanted to advise the council that a few meetings ago, we had some conversation on liaison roles, and it will be something that we will be visiting in the future, but what I have presently done was reached out to the different organizations that we are currently acting as active liaisons for, and I've started to receive feedback. So part of this process is to understand what they're asking for, and then I believe as a council, we need to sit down and we need to determine what do we do with the role. It's not a role that's required in any of our ordinances, and I really honestly don't know how the role came to be, but I think it's prudent for us, especially in light of the fact that there could be a cost associated, or there currently is, for attendance to those meetings and what the value is, in conjunction with additional communication with these groups, so maybe more frequent report outs from some of the organizations that we actually do provide some level of funding to. So that's to come in the future. I did in public want to shout out to Public Works, so if you could relay this to the guys when, if and when you see them, Jim. We have been faced with some off-season snow that seems to have been hitting us on a Saturday or a Sunday, and somehow it's just been requiring a lot of extra work that needs to be done by the staff, in addition to the fact that we're down one person that is able to drive a snowplow. So I just want to make mention of that. I know that as in the past storm, people may have seen a little bit of a change in when the snow is removed, but the staff is doing the best they can to keep up with it and clearing it in accordance with their ability to do that. So Public Works is doing a great job with that. I wanted to mention that the staff has decided that we're going to have a holiday open house at City Hall on Wednesday, December 11th from 3:00 to 6:00, I believe the times were. So we'll be coming up with flyers and asking, great to put it in the newspaper so we can advertise it, but it's really meant to be an opportunity for people to come up to City Hall and just kind of interact with us, learn a little bit about City Hall, have some punch or some goodies and, and just interact with, with our staff. So that will be happening in conjunction with the holidays on December 11th. The last thing that I had on my list that, that I wanted to review with the council is relative to the parade. So I think the, the post-Thanksgiving parade that we have the day after Thanksgiving every year is, is great for our community. It draws a big crowd. It's grown in just the last couple of years that I've lived here into something that truly is turning our city into a point of destination as well as an event to bring people out of their houses, to kind of join that community together at Christmas time. One of the things that, that I had noticed right away with the parade and I wanted to discuss with the council tonight is I'm, I have more of a preventative approach, so if there's a way that we can prevent things from happening before they do, I think it's prudent for us to take that measure. And when I look at the parade, one of the big attractions to it is the, the ability to throw candy out so the kids can come grab the candy. Well, historically, and we're, we're in a little different situation because I believe there's going to be some construction going on, on one side of the street, so we've already talked to the contractors working on that, and they'll actually be able to pull some of those barriers back so the kids can actually stand in the parking lane. But usually, typically, there's kids that are on both sides and they stand in front of the cars, and it makes it difficult for people that are driving, and I really don't want to see anyone get injured as a result of this, and I don't want to see us have to stop something that's such a big draw and such a big joy for our community. So I'm going to be working with city staff to see if there's some, something that we could come up with to provide more open spaces in the parking lanes. So again, there's nothing set in stone, and if anybody has any ideas, I would appreciate it. You know, it's, it's difficult to close those lanes off. That's not a day that you want to do it, but it might be reasonable if we were able to work something out that past a certain time, if a car leaves, we're able to put cones there so children can stand there instead of in front of the cars and, and too close to the vehicles that are moving in the parade. So I just wanted to make the council aware of that and invite any, any kind of suggestions. Again, this is not intended to, to hurt any of the businesses, but it's really intended to see how we could make it more feasible to protect the safety, safety of our children. I don't want to see, or adults for that matter, I don't want to see something happen. If we can take steps now to prevent that, I'd rather do that, so...
I believe Custer passed an ordinance, you couldn't throw candy out anymore. You know, you go and then hand it to them, but you couldn't throw it in the vehicles.
Yeah, and, and I had heard that people weren't very compliant with that, so they were, they had thoughts of maybe coming down heavy and saying, no, we're parades then, but I think you're still going to see a parade happen. I would just, I would just rather us see if there's something preventative we can do. Again, you know, I'm not, this is a great event, and I think we need to continue it, and we're very unique in what we can do. I just want to see if we can add some safety to it, so...
You know, maybe if somebody's in the parade, they, you know, want to throw candy, they'd have people walking alongside them to throw it out versus, you know, they're not, they're not getting out into the driveline.
Yeah.
You know, they can throw it more towards the kids.
And I spoke with, I've already talked to Janet about this in the chamber because I wanted to make sure that this wasn't as received as I'm coming through with the negative. I'm just trying to make a good thing we have better, and she understands, and in their sign up, they ask that people hand candy out and have people that do that, but you simply know that human nature, it's not going to happen. And there's people that sit on floats that don't have walkers by the side either. So, you know, I'm envisioning if we could just have maybe an imaginary line or some of our barricades or something, the kids are on the other side, we could still reach them with it and avoid that two-year-old from running out someplace that they shouldn't be, so...
Rather than having, could the floats possibly use a lane and a half rather than both lanes come down? Can you block off a half lane on that one side where the sidewalk, new sidewalks are?
So we can, we can evaluate.
And in that way, the people stand, you know, outside of those, I mean, within the barriers there and use a lane and a half rather than two lanes for the floats? If that would be safe, if, if, I mean, you know, Vic, it's like you have your fire truck in there.
Yeah.
Could you use a lane and a half rather than two lanes to do that?
I'm an environment, so I'll get where I need to go to do what I need to do.
Well, typically, typically, they drive down the center.
Yeah, right.
So if it's moved over...
We drive just off-center and it'd still be both sides.
But...
Depends on what the trip hazards are on the construction.
Right, and then there's usually kids on both sides. So that is...
But most of the time, the kids stand on the sidewalks of, of there.
Uh, no.
Most time.
In front of cars and, yeah, yeah.
But there's no two-year-olds really, because most parents don't let their two-year-olds go running out there.
I've talked to some people who have avoided...
Somebody gets away.
Yeah, it's just if somebody gets away. And, you know, again, this isn't meant to be negative toward the event, it's just how can we make it a little safer? So I thought, you know, even if we did something, if a vehicle leaves at 3:00, we'll block it off and put some kind of fence there and people can stand there in just a second. We're getting the benefit of those two new cross paths that are in our new sidewalk, so cars won't park there, people can stand there, not necessarily in the street.
Just put up temporary signs and it says, no cars past 4:00.
X amount of time and then just block it off. So we'll see what we can do, but I wanted to make the council aware of that so I could get any ideas that you had and make sure that you, you agreed that it's, it's something that we should look at too. Victor, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure whatever happened to it, this is not related directly, but indirectly, we had back in the mid-'90s, John might remember, Hill City was declared two different times, I believe, Steve probably remembers, that is Christmas capital of South Dakota type of a proclamation. I don't know what it takes to do that, but it kind of fell by the wayside after one person was, you know, wasn't in office anymore and just kind of ran away. So I don't know what it takes to, to do something like that, but it, it actually is pretty cool if that's, because we are in a stereotypic Norman Rockwell painting, that's where we live.
Exactly. So prior to accepting a position on city council...
Except for the signs, of course.
Prior to accepting a position on city council, I was working on the events of the post-Christmas, and that was one of the things that, that we had talked about, is how do we get back to what we were? And I think that the Businessmen's Association is doing a great job in decorating and having events to get people into town, and I've also talked to Janet at the chamber and myself are looking to what are those things that we can do that also engage the community? There's communities that have decorating contests, you know, and, and there's a way that you can do it, but that gives people incentive to decorate and imagine how beautiful the city would look if we had a preponderance of the houses that even just minimally put up a, a string of lights. So I'm with you, Victor, I think that that's a, a place that we need to go, and that's one of those situations where it's not just a business thing and it's not just a people thing, it's pulling things together. So I think all of these things that we do, the parade is a big thing, you know, as simple as it may sound, an open house in Hill City is, I think, a way to get people out and invite them. How do we encourage that? We, we have tried to manage dances and, you know, can you have a sweater contest and stuff like that? I think we can get there. We just need to build the momentum. And in working prior with the Businessmen's Association, we'd add something new every year. So instead of trying to grow it that big all at once, just make sure that we had one new attraction to add every year, and that's been done with a lot of the business stuff. So I think it's time for us as well as a, as a city to take a look at how can we support some of that? Can the city sponsor a decorating contest where maybe a prize could be money toward a water bill? You know, there's, there's lots of ideas that we can have. We just need the right people and time to be able to, to do that, so that's what we're trying to create, so... Thank you. Anything else? Okay, so those are my thoughts. We can talk more about that. So let's move on to the Aldermen, so let's start with Janet.
I'm nothing.
Okay, and Steve? Steve has nothing. Jim?
I attended the chamber, obviously Janet was here, but one thing I noted, you know, just from people thinking of how the chamber works and what, you know, we've really got four levels of promotion and marketing. We've got the state doing their tourism that promotes the state, then you typically got Badlands and Lakes doing the region, and the chamber doing the Hill City area, and then it's up to the business to market themselves as well. So they were talking about some expectation control and that kind of stuff, and, you know, we're, they've been getting some criticism that they don't listen, and yet they provided multiple examples of how they actually, you know, did take the feedback, did analyze it, and have made some adjustments. So I think they're doing, and another thing I heard there, there was definitely some people that were affected by the sidewalk and reading about the contractors' attentiveness as far as if there was anything asked, and so they were definitely saying that the contractors are performing well in that task.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Minor?
Just to thank you to yourself for allowing me to participate by phone for the P&amp;Z meeting last week and for the sidewalk meetings. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, Mr. Mick Mackin?
So speaking of the sidewalk project, it continues. If you haven't been down there recently, the upper sidewalk is all poured, the concrete's brand-new, all the way from Granite Sports up to Gold Diggers. The lower sidewalk is also complete through that stretch, although they're staging some equipment through there, so everybody's kind of being routed up through the upper part next to the businesses. I've heard a lot of positive feedback from business owners. I know on occasion, we need to shut water down to replace some curb stops and do some digging and whatnot, and we try to give people as much notice, active notice that we can. So the, check out the corner of Granite Sports. You can see how we achieve the ADA compliance, where you kind of come up to the block and then you circle around, like you're headed up Elm Street, and then there's a little ramp that brings you back up around Granite Sports. That's all ADA compliant. That corner will be duplicated down by Desperados. We do the same thing where we'll head up McGregor a little bit, turn left to go up a ramp, and then you'll be hit to the upper part. So kind of the plan is becoming more visual for people now to get a better grasp of how the end product will look. They're currently just transitioning from phase one into phase two, so they're, you probably saw them cut a big section of concrete out of the street, the parking lane. That's going to be the, the mirror image bump out on that west side. That will have the ADA compliant ramp and then the set of stairs to get people from the lower sidewalk to the upper, and it will line up with the other bump out over, in between the Mangy Moose and the Junk Crane Gallery. So they're going to be in this middle section for a while because they've got to build all of that first. They did a poor footings, get the curb back in place, the street back in place, so there's going to be a lot of work done in this mid-block for a while. We kind of shrunk the footprint a little bit of their workspace so that we can still allow two-way traffic to go through there. It's going to narrow up a little bit, but that can still be achieved, so we should still be able to get regular traffic through there. They just came and measured that phase one for the, the new handrail that will go in, and so they'll be fabricating that, bringing it up and installing it here in the next few weeks. I don't have an exact date on that, so you'll kind of see the finished product. Also, the canopies, they've been temporarily supported now for the past couple months, those, and I know they're working on the cafes on it today. They're moving the post back to their permanent final resting spot, so to speak, in advance of getting ready for the, the iron railing that'll be going in. So a lot of good progress. So I'd like to thank all the businesses for being patient. It's a very worthwhile project, and thank the contractors, the state, and of course, our Public Works guys that have been phenomenal helping us out with shutting water off and on, helping clear the streets of snow and whatnot, so... That's that project. The business improvement project, Buzz Grove and I just met the other day. They're kind of putting the, the final touches on the plan for the Senior Center addition. They're talking that the kitchen itself is designed well. We're talking about other opportunities to maximize storage and some tweaks to the plan for that. Also, just waiting to get back mechanical drawings of how everything will be heated and cooled going forward. As far as the alley project, I'm still working with Kale to get the electrical engineer to finish up their drawings, and then I'll bring that to you guys for final review and authorization to put that out to bid. Again, we're not losing any time because the, the time window for construction will still be, you know, in May, June-ish of next year, so we'll get that out there, so that's moving along. The water reservoir project, I do have a signed copy of the easement with the railroad, so that is complete. I am actively rejuvenating our loan information through Rural Development. Had a couple of conversations with them and a couple of emails, so that is getting reinvigorated because now that we can show... now that we can show them that the path is clear to construct that water reservoir, so working on that. And then the major lake bridge project, just finalizing the bridge plans and then still working with the Forest Service to obtain the permissions for that water sign, or that sewer line to be rerouted through there over by the spillway.
Can we just go back to the reservoir project for a minute?
Yep.
And can you talk a little bit about the engineering that needs to be done relative to the construction of it?
Sure. So I think I've communicated in the past couple of meetings that I've asked Kale to go through those plans, those drawings once again, to make sure that we're comfortable with it, in case anything has changed over the past year or so. He's been in communication with the people that put the tanks up, so that we know exactly what it will take to get that tank put up there. And so the main thing with them is, you know, their, their material to build that tank probably will fit on a little trailer or something that would fit inside of here, you know, it's all those glass fused panels that bolt together. They don't take up much space, so getting it up there isn't the problem, but when they construct it, they like to have a 10-foot area around the tank, so that they can get it erected, put up. And plus, we need an access point to get around that tank when we go and inspect it and just check on it. So Kale is making sure that those landings are in place, so that they can go up and erect it, and then we can check on it, so we're fine tuning that a little bit. The challenge with that is that there's quite an elevation change, the topography's fairly steep up there, so we're making that happen, so that's just a fine tuning. The core foundational work has already been drawn out, we've already got that in place. The other one is, we're tweaking the road, we have a little access road that gets up to there. We're tweaking that road a little bit, so that there's, it's fairly steep to get up there. We're trying to, to pig, or not pigtail it, but.
Switch back.
Switch back on it, thank you, to make it a little bit more feasible to drive up at any time that we might need to, or if we need to push snow off it or maintain the road. So we're putting some tweaks into that. Again, those are basic. The crossing the old Hill City Road, crossing the railroad tracks, those have already been in place for quite some time. So we're just, we're just fine tuning, polishing it, and we'll submit that back into Rural Development for their final review. So it should go fairly quickly. I just need to communicate with them and see if I can get a timeline of what we're looking at, so.
Absolutely. Okay. Any questions? Anything else? Can I recognize the audience?
I was just.
Could you come forward and state your name, so we can get to.
Sure, what a, and I'm just asking if we have a date for the next bid board meeting?
I do not.
Okay.
I, I had a conversation with Aileen Hamm last week, we're going to get together this week, just to reconnect. You know, we don't really have anything new to present to the bid board at this time, but hopefully within the next week, week and a half, we will. So I don't have a date set yet.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And it'll be on the webpage then, right?
Yep, yeah, yeah. It's a, it's a quorum, an official city meeting, and so 24 hours at minimum in advance of the meeting, you'll see the agenda on there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, with no other business, I'll entertain a motion to move to executive session post a five-minute break.
I'll write the motion second.
There's a motion second, all of us in favor?
All right.
Close, motion carried. Thank you, folks.